All right, officially call to order this joint session between council and PC. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we are here for new business. Before we dive into that, I would just yield to the chair for PC if you had any opening comments.
Right. We do have somebody special in our midst there, which is Mike Tilka, who is the new director of the CRPA. I've had several conversations with him. I know Lindsey's had conversations with him. We may, since we are sharing a vision and implementation strategy, one of the things that we've always struggled with is examples that kind of look like they fit our area. Mike has worked on, was it Coralville?
Yes.
Outside of Iowa City. And we've had several conversations about it, very impressed with what they've done. He was actually in the planning side of that, had planners working on that. We may want to tap into Mike at some point in time to get some additional feedback, help us direct our vision towards what we want to do in Dale Summit.
All right, great, always, thank you. It's always great to have somebody who's lived it before.
Yep, he has.
Excellent. All right, so I guess without further ado, who's leading this one on?
Well, Lindsey is going to be the principal conversationalist this evening. But Mark Grubovzik from our zoning office, as well as Don France and our folks that regularly attend the Planning Commission meetings. Mike Bloom, the Assistant Township Manager is also here tonight, as well as myself. As the staff, we've worked on a variety of different aspects of this collectively. But Lindsey is your subject matter expert, and she's going to basically give us, in essence, a refresher of kind of where we've been and where we're headed. So without further ado, Lindsey, feel free.
Thank you so much. So as Adam said, this is a refresher, definitely a joint effort by council, the Planning Commission staff. We had input from the public and Citizen Advisory Committee, so this is just a refresher tonight to kind of show you where we've been and where we're going. So here's our agenda. We'll go through the vision statement, review the 75% plan and process, get into some of the changes that DPZ made to update the Dale Summit area plan, and discuss the preparation for the second joint meeting. So why are we here in the first place? Dale Summit has always been sort of a hodgepodge area for zoning districts. There's different, there's been fragmented development throughout. There's really no sense of place there in Dale Summit, no green spaces. And there's different commercial uses mixed with industrial uses and just a hodgepodge of things. So these, we felt, the township felt were downfalls. So doing something different, rather than just the typical, you know, we want to request zoning change to have a new use. We felt that moving forward with something a little bit different, including some possibly form-based code, would help us regulate this area a little bit better. So that's why we're here tonight. And then we have our vision. So back in 2021, this vision was prepared and endorsed both by council and the Planning Commission. So I'll just go over it, just to remind us. The overarching vision of this area plan is to transform Dale Summit into the gateway to college township, establishing Dale Summit as an attractive and instantly recognizable place within the context of the larger township region and county. The community envisions an activity hub that is vibrant, economically prosperous, socially equitable, and environmentally sustainable. A place which through proactive planning and well-tailored regulations strikes a sound balance between encouraging business and industry expansion while remaining respectful to important community livability factors such as improving housing affordability, providing sufficient public services, and lessening traffic congestion through improved connectivity for all transportation modes. So when you think about the vision, you know, think about college township, think about Dale Summit, and, you know, the work that went in to prepare this, this vision. I'm going to go through some past actions. This presentation's maybe ten or 15 minutes long, so if you don't mind, we can have a question and answer session at the end. If I could just get through, that would be great. So we didn't just start this last week. This has been going on since January of 2021. We actually had a kickoff meeting on January 21st, 2021. And I remember that date because I was driving into work and I was listening to September, the Earth and Fire Song. And it was the 21st, and I remember singing, "Do you remember?" And then I said, you know, instead of 21st of September, I said January. And it didn't matter because it didn't rhyme, but it still reminded me, and now that day is stuck in my head, and it's a good song. So we got together, our Citizen Advisory Committee, there were about 12 to 15 members. They all worked really well together. We, during the time we had the Citizen Advisory Committee, we performed a SWOT analysis where we talked about strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. We also did a visual preference survey with the Citizen Advisory Committee and formed different focus groups, including recreation, land use, community engagement, transportation aesthetics, and economic development. So we gathered all the information that we could from this group and from the outcome of the meetings and the focus groups. And then staff had the time to do some research and prepare the draft Dale Summit area plan. So moving forward to October of 2021, the Community Advisory Committee presented the draft Dale Summit area plan to council for their review and their blessing. And so at that time, they remanded, council remanded the plan to the Planning Commission with some specific direction. One is to focus on the goals and objectives, and second was to develop an understanding of form-based code. So between November and December and early into January 2022, staff provided a form, a guide to form-based code, a series of webinars that we watched both together and separately at the Planning Commission. We had a lot of interactive work sessions with the Planning Commission where we were often drawing on the board and just kind of making sure that we're understanding what we're about to move into. And during this time, we also started to consider requests for qualifications for potential planning consultants coming in. Then come around to early January 2022, the Planning Commission then met and decides to support the use of form-based code or a hybrid version, this is where the hybrid version really comes in, as a means to implement the Dale Summit area plan. And in March, there was a joint meeting held between council and the Planning Commission. And at this time, the Planning Commission was able to take everything that they learned about form-based code over the past few months and present it to council and say, you know, this is what we learned, this is how we feel we should move forward. So once we did that, council supported pursuing a consultant and moving forward with developing form-based code in Dale Summit. So we get back to the RFQ, the Request for Qualifications. We put together a committee for the RFQ, made up of three members from the Planning Commission, two members of council, the regional planning director at the time, and some staff members. And once everyone agreed with the contents of the RFQ, we put it out there and we put a deadline on it. And we received three pretty strong proposals from different consultants around the country. We then in October scheduled some interviews. We had those in person here in their room, in this room, and we reviewed their proposals. Each interview was about maybe an hour and a half, two hours, where the whole committee got to ask questions, get examples of what each consultant can do for us. At the end of that process, a consensus was made by the committee and staff to hire DPZ co-design to assist the township in finalizing, to assist the township in doing three specific things amongst more. The first one was to finalize the Dale Summit area plan. Second was prepare interim zoning changes. And the third was to prepare a form-based code or hybrid version to implement that Dale Summit area plan. So we hired DPZ, and early in February, they came to town. We had some tours of the area and of the region. We met with different stakeholders. And then in March, we talked about interim zoning steps. Around the same time, we had a rezoning request submitted to the township to request multifamily uses in the multifamily residential uses in the planned research business park district. And then around March, too, is the time we started talking about a charrette and when that would happen. So in April of 2023, DPZ attended the Planning Commission to talk more about interim zoning changes and how those would look moving forward. The PC had some questions for DPZ, in which they answered. And then work was continued to be done to prepare a re, to work with the rezoning request. And then comes May. Community engagement started around this time. Other than the stakeholders that we engaged earlier in the process, we started preparing flyers and placing them around Dale Summit. It was a rainy day. We had Scotch tape and flyers, and hopefully the word got around, but I think a lot of them sort of smeared by the end of the time we got back to the township building. But we made an effort to do an outreach. We also reached out to the condo associations and homeowners associations, both located in the Dale Summit area and all of the businesses there. We held a pre-charrette, which was just the stakeholders. We wanted to get them excited about the charrette, let them know, know who's going to be there and why it matters to show up. And we are also introduced to the Gridx mapping system, which was part of the contract as well with DPZ. Finally, then, in May, a joint meeting between council and the Planning Commission was held to discuss specifically zoning in Dale Summit around Shiloh Road and the rezoning efforts. We get to June and the charrette is held, June 18th through the 21st, 24th, in this room. DPZ showed up. We had about 80 participants all week, people in and out. DPZ was here doing their drawings and staff was here to support. We had a lot of people from the community stop by and show interest in what we're doing. I also wanted to mention, too, going back to the Community Advisory Committee, a lot of those members followed us through. So a lot of them had shown up to the charrette as well, and they stayed engaged. We then performed a post-charrette survey. It had a pretty good outcome. And then around that time, staff received a preliminary draft for review of the, of a form-based code. And we met with DPZ to discuss those changes. We continued to review the preliminary draft and continued discussions regarding zoning changes in Dale Summit. Come September, staff met with DPZ to discuss the preliminary draft and how it could better form to our code and how our code exists now, specifically with definitions and some other.
Terminology.
Terminology there, thank you, Mark. And then comes October, a public hearing was held to approve multifamily residential uses in the PRBD by conditional use. Same thing in October, DPZ submits the draft Dale Summit area plan for review. And as they completed the remaining 25% of the 75% draft, which we talk about a little later, and then DPZ submits the draft form-based code for staff to review. We provided those to the Planning Commission and council in December. And then that brings us to tonight, which is the joint meeting between council and the Planning Commission to go over this. So that was just a sort of brief timeline of where we've been, just to kind of show you that, you know, we didn't just start, and a lot of effort on everybody's behalf has gone into this, the Planning Commission, council, everybody. So the 75% draft was completed, prepared with input, of course, from the Planning Commission, council, public, and staff. And then this 75% plan, complete plan, was endorsed by council and the Planning Commission. When we gave this plan over to DPZ, we didn't know if they were going to rip apart, if they were going to say, you know, these visions, this goal, these are, you know, out of touch, but they weren't. They were very pleased with everything that we had in there, which kind of confirms that we were taking the early steps to take those steps to changing what Dale Summit is today. In our 75% draft, we had implementation strategy. Not going to go through all of them, but some of the bigger ones, of course, was regulate on form instead of use. And we knew early on that this is what we wanted to do, so this implementation strategy is really underway. And then defining a brand for Dale Summit. You know, it's, it's just this unknown kind of area that doesn't really have its own niche, so, you know, that's one thing that we want to do. And one of the outcomes, objectives in the plan, too, were to consider the environment, entertainment sector as that, that niche for Dale Summit. And then the importance of demonstration projects are also incorporated into our implementation schedule. These can be planning by doing, or also known as tactical urbanism, just some little demonstration projects that you can do on a pretty, you know, loose budget, where, you know, you can put in some planters and some paint and kind of get a feeling of how a place can be if that ordinance, you know, if the ordinance were in place. Those weren't the only implementation strategies, as I said, so here are just a few more that we have placed inside the plan. So getting into plan sections, if you see on the left-hand side, the Planning Commission council staff, we had all of our input here on, on this side of the screen. Then DPZ took the plan, the 75% complete plan, and finished it by adding the elements that are here on the right, including the charrette outcome, study area capacity, a lot of mapping, some missing metal information, and charrette takeaways. But as we go through, we're going to be talking about form-based code. And if you're not familiar with it, it can be kind of confusing. So just to kind of get an idea of what form-based code is, we compare it to Euclidian zoning, which is what we have in place right now. Euclidian zoning is residential, commercial, industrial, and you have those harsh lines between them, and you can't, you know, do commercial. between them, and you can't, you know, do commercial in a residential zoning district with Euclidean zoning. And it's Euclidean because it was in 1926 in Euclid, Ohio, there was a case where zoning became a thing. So, and, so, when you come to form-based, compared to Euclidean, those lines go away. And you don't really consider much use, but it's more about form and how the place feels on a more human scale. And we'll be talking about a regulating plan, which will really become our new zoning map for Dale Summit. And we have an example of it later, but you'll see, they kind of come up in nodes where the each zone or center of the node, things get more intense as you get more into the middle with regulations. And then as they go out, the regulations get a little bit more lighter. And then form-based code is a form of zoning which concentrates on form of buildings and how they relate to the public realm. Uses are important, but the form of the buildings are of higher importance. So, we get to the charrette. As I said before, it was a four-day event which took place in College Township Council Room. At the end of the week, my Apple Watch told me that I increased my step count by walking up and down these steps so many times throughout the week. So, it was a good, it was a good workout and a good experience. There was an opening presentation and a closing presentation, and everything that came out of the charrette was, is what informed the remaining 25% of the plan that DPZ prepared and submitted them to us for our review. Some of the major charrette takeaways are highlighted here. There was a strong interest in seeing Dale Summit evolving to serve as a hub of activity. There was some skepticism about the details of how it can happen in College Township. There was general support for the findings in the market analysis. There was strong interest in an entertainment or indoor recreational food and beverage uses. An interest in a variety of housing types, and a recognition for the need for office and industrial is limited, but can accommodate in a mix with commercial and housing. So, just more of how we can mix uses was brought up. And then there was an interest in building on the local identity, and we talked a lot about that during the, the early stages, when we talked about aesthetics and we talked about branding, and of course, adding trails, bike lanes, and walking connections. And it was determined that the status quo, if we don't change now, it's, you know, it's just going to be more of the same. So, we figured that wasn't, it was determined that wasn't an option. So, as we move forward, we talked about Dale Summit and how it's changed over the years. And we call those defining developments, like the Corning Plant, the Nittany Mall. And now, we're updating the zoning, and we have a plan for Dale Summit, so we're wondering really what's going to come next. And then we get into the 25% of the plan that DPZ has prepared. And you can see here, the study area and some conceptual ideas of, you know, how the, the property can be used to its full capacity. A lot of the input that we've received was there's really not a lot of green space in Dale Summit. There's a memorial, a memorial cemetery there, which is open and green, but it's not really ideal. This map is showing us how green connections can be made throughout Dale Summit. One of the implementation strategies is to ultimately connect the Spring Creek Canyon over to the top of the mountain, over to Mount Nittany. And so, this kind of forms up, you know, how that can actually look. And then we have our regulating plan that we discussed a little bit earlier. You can see that these nodes, you know, are purple in the middle with the more lighter regulations on the outside. So, these are kind of the areas that would be maybe primed for development, but that's just kind of an idea of how things are really going to look as we move forward. And then DPZ tested the concept and gave us a graphic example of how they can look. On the left is an example of how something is built using Euclidean zoning. And on the right is an example of how that would look using the full capacity of the land under form-based code. And I just want everyone to remember that this is our code, and we can, our code, our plan, we can do with it what we want. We can scale it back, we can move it forward, but, you know, we're kind of in the midst of it now, and this is an exciting time to, to think about, in my opinion. So, those are just some examples of what DPZ has placed in the plan, and you all have it in your hands for review. If you have any questions, of course, this would be a good time for the questions. My goal was to confirm that the vision statement is still in good standing, that everyone understands the process thus far, and to talk about where we're going next. And that's my presentation. So, taking any questions?
Okay, yeah. So, I guess we can just go from right to left and start with Norrie. Do you have any questions or comments?
Well, I was a little confused. Who wrote this?
So, the 75% of the plan was prepared as a joint effort between Council, the Planning Commission, staff with input from the Community Advisory Committee, and the public.
Now, who wrote it?
And then DPZ took the rest, the 25%, and added the rest of the 25%. So, it was an effort between the Planning Commission, Council, staff, and DPZ.
So, for instance, who wrote page nine?
Early on in the plan was what staff did.
Okay.
And-
Just, just wanted to know, because I thought DPZ wrote all of it.
No, staff had a lot of input in this. DPZ did take it, and when they edited the plan, they put it into a Google Doc, and, you know, back and forth a little bit with staff, but they mostly did pages, I think they're noted in here, in your-
Forty-four to 112.
Thanks, yeah.
Forty-four, 44 to 112.
DPZ, yeah, 44 to 112. That's DPZ's section of the plan.
Thank you. No, no more questions?
Rich?
No questions. I still support the vision statement that we laid out previously.
Okay, thank you. Ed?
I have no questions. There are some things in the market studies of pricing for the for-sale properties and also for rentals, where I think the consultant used numbers that are higher than the means used in State College. Actually went in and did some of that place work myself, and also did some sources. So, I mean, they're looking at sales prices at $268 a square foot, which is way above for two bedrooms. If you go to examples that we can get rarely, 200, 200 to 250 is what sale prices in State College are. Their prices are way too high. Rents are also high. There's, their rents that they're using would not bring any affordability into this marketplace. So, I just wanted to point that out. They're going to have to look at some things differently. Also, their townhouses are bigger than what's being built. The new townhouses that are being built currently are running for about $206 a square foot for a two-bedroom townhouse. They're using 268. So, they're just some little things that I looked up today, and I think they're important.
Thank you.
Susan?
Well, I support the statement as it's written. I wasn't part of the writing of it, but I support what's written here. And I also wanted to say that I found the document very helpful. I appreciated getting all the doc, the demographic information as a lead-in. And also, you know, I come from a healthcare perspective, and I focus a lot on Mount Nittany's Community Health Needs Assessment, which is a stakeholder's survey that's done every three years by the health system to maintain their nonprofit tax status. And one of the important pieces of that CHNA, something that comes out of that is, ever since we've been doing it since 2013, the community is asking for help with chronic disease management and, you know, housing affordability. So, I think, you know, certainly to your point, Ed, there are details in here that, that we'll have to kind of slice and dice through, but the overarching vision and the ideas that are in here leave room to improve the quality of life by changing how we're doing what we're doing in terms of development. So, I'm excited to do the work, so I thank you for all the research that went into this that helped inform me. You know, I love data, so thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd really like the document. As far as the, those six nodes that you showed, especially the ones to the east or southeast, is, is that a group of people that own large amount of property, or is it a whole lot of small properties?
Okay. The, the slide you see with the nodes, this is where their best guess is these would, these would take place. These nodes could be fluid and show up anywhere. It's, the, the, the development projects are going to dictate the hot points, and once something develops, it should naturally grow around it. This is, this is not DPZ saying this is where they will be. This is where-
Right.
-they would assume, but they could show up anywhere on there depending on what type of development comes in.
No, but I just like, just, just example, like that bottom node out there, is there 20 people that own all that property, or is it three people, or?
That's-
Go ahead.
Currently, that's one owner. It's the-
Prison?
Prison property-
Okay.
-that is out there. When we first started thinking about the boundary, and that was one thing we considered, should we place those in there or not? And the decision was made to place them in.
You have several tracks out there that are sizable. There's the Shuey Track, the Shuey Farm, which is fairly significant. Maxwell owns a considerable amount of acreage in the area, as does the Dr. Clara Estate has a considerable amount of property, as does the Morsebacher family, the former Joel Rogers Farm. There are individual parcels out there that are sizable that are in individual ownership. Balance of the area, generally speaking, aside from the mall and Center Realty, which owns the mall, or portions of the mall, I should say, at this point, is, is, there's not a lot of singularity there. Friedman, I believe, is Eastview Plaza. You have some of those kinds of, Metzger is a property holder out there as well. So, while there are owners of some larger tracks, there's a wide variety of ownership in, in this area in general. So, it's, it's a good question, and it, it kind of begs other questions in terms of who we engage with, how we engage with people as we go forward.
And would, would like form-based code be easier where there'd be, somebody would own a large tract or property versus a whole bunch of owners?
I think, to, I mean, thinking about retrofitting is a little more difficult, I think, than actually having a greenfield and being able to just start fresh. We have both of those options.
And one more sort of idea, I think the, it mentioned a lot about art. I think that little piece of land between like here and Wallace Union Mart would be a great place to put a statue or something like that.
Good, good thinking.
Statue, Adam.
Oh, gee. Yeah. There you go.
You're a manager.
You know, I was thinking that, but I wasn't going to say it.
That's, that's all.
Would it have a fig leaf?
Oh, my gosh.
Definitely. It has leaves.
Can't unsee that.
All right, moving on from that. You know where to go, but up there. I was actually thinking like a-
Oh, no.
I was thinking like a stainless steel of our, of our logo. I wasn't really, yeah.
Yeah, that, that one sells fast.
Thank you.
Oh, man. I don't have, I guess I don't have questions just on this specific piece, and I still support the vision. Ray?
Usually, I always am going last, so I'm going to defer to Tracy, and I'll follow.
Sure, absolutely. I want to say, being a newcomer, that I felt that it was well put together, and I appreciate the vision, and I stand by it. And I think that if all goes well and we make the adjustments, and thank you for the affordability, because that's very important in our area. And I appreciate you taking the time to look at those numbers. I think that it could be an attraction to keep families here and have students who graduate actually want to stay here and put down roots, so, yeah.
Right, thanks.
So, again, taking a look at it, I mean, what I think we're trying to accomplish tonight, too, is looking at the vision and seeing whether or not we agree with the, the, the concept of it, as, as well as the direction and, and strategy towards it. I agree with that. Whether or not certain numbers work out or not, those are all part of living documents, too, as well, that need to be addressed as we go forward. And hopefully, as those plans start to come forward, you know, staff is, is going to enlighten us as well as Council and say, okay, you know, while we think this is what they're recommending, we're kind of a little bit of a disagreement, we're trying to work it towards that, it's going to be a working plan. It's a guideline more than anything, and I think that's the big thing. So, it, it gives us that, that ability to kind of forecast ahead where we want to go, and the path that we get there may have a little bit of a few swerves in it to get there, but I think that's, that's the important part. But the vision of what we want to see and what we want to do in long-term, and some of these visions we've got to look at, and we, I just recommend to people that they may be far out. The final completions, a lot of the stuff, may be long after, I'm no longer here. So, we may be looking at things that are 10, 15, 20, 25, 30 years out. What's it going to look like? And I think that's the, that's the key behind it. And that's why I say, when we look at relatable areas, which I got exposed to a little bit in the last couple meetings I've had with somebody, it really kind of shows from a GIS standpoint, too, as well, what that vision can look like, as well as just the flat versions that we've been seeing. This is a map, is what we see. It's great to see examples of, hey, here's the buildings. Here's this avenue that changed from this to this. This used to be here, now this is here, and we didn't lose some of the, you know, the, the local businesses and properties are still incorporating that. Some disappeared, some are still there. So, it, it changes the fabric and the texture of what we're seeing in that particular area. I think, I, I agree with the plan, we've got to get forward to it, and there's going to be a lot of work in progress.
Thanks, Ray.
Any follow-up questions, comments, before we go back to staff? Good?
Not to, not to put him on the spot.
Oh, yeah, well, if you weren't, I was going to do that. I was hoping you would.
But with Mr. Chalko being here and being the Director of the Center Region Planning Agency, and he having some previous experience and exposure to the concepts of form-based code, I, I know this is impromptu, but if there's any, anything that you'd like to and care to share with us about your experiences, and based on what you know of the area, what you've maybe seen here tonight, how it may or may not be relatable based on the experiences that you've had, that would be very helpful.
Absolutely. I appreciate the opportunity, Mr. Manager, Council members, planning commissioners. As part of the regional program, being only two months in, part of my goal in revamping of the regional side of it is to be a resource to all of our townships in a, in our borough. To start off, I've been so impressed by the, by, by you all and by your, your staff. I've worked with each of them so far, I've been a pleasure to work with just in those two months. But to get to the, the question about why I was brought up here, I've worked in a few municipalities over the last 10 years, the first being Coralville, Iowa, which is centered on a commercial strip right outside Iowa City. So, Big Ten College, similar enrollment. That suburb is about 22,000, with the city of Iowa City being about 74,000, which, you know, the other five municipalities in this area about balances out. They do have a mall, their mall is still okay, but they had three areas of their city that they wanted to do something different with. They wanted a vision. One of those areas was truck stops in smaller industrial areas. They turned it into a catalyst site that now has a hotel and office building. It's a walkable attraction center. And if you, and if you look at that commercial core, as Chair Foyziat was talking to, it's going to look a little different for a few years, because you might have that single-story all of- Olive Garden in a sea of parking, next to now a seven-story hotel. But it will take time to change that. If you look at two other areas of Coralville, and Chairman Forziat probably has that burned into his memory, because I was really honing in on showing him a few other areas.
That was excellent, too.
Yeah. They, they took a, a commercial strip that had, you know, your little box stores, you know, your music store, a few other ones. And now three of those four corners are three, four-story apartments with, you know, commercial uses underneath it. So they, if you have a vision, you can make code for it. And that was just a, a really similar municipality, I thought, to, to college townships. In another municipality I worked in for the last seven and a half years, the first two-year, very Euclidean zoning, and then for my last five and a half years, worked under a form-based code. It was part of the process to put that into effect and then to get it out there. This was a fast-growing suburb of 50,000. So the number of projects that I took through as, as the manager of the current planning division, we had eight planners, was probably the amount of projects college township has seen in 30 to 40 years, just the, the traffic and the flow. So I had to have that conversation a lot of times. I've, I'm a CNET junkie in the two months, so I've watched a lot of your past meetings. So what I'm getting at here is if you have hesitation on form-based code, it can work. The average resident isn't going to be affected. The, the deck, the fence, the expansion standards, you're still going to be able to find those. The, the people that this is going to change for are probably those seven developers that you've worked with for 20 to 30 years, and have probably already seen the draft and made comments on it, and they'll let you know what they think. And where we've done the transition with them to get them over to, okay, here's what we're going to have to retool things, you do that in your pre-application conference that I'm sure your staff is already having when a development proposal comes in. So if there's any hesitation about form-based code, it can work. I, I've been through it. And that is the one-sentence summary of my remarks tonight. And I'm more than happy to assist anyone, talk about anything else, anybody wants to talk about with form-based code. And in the, just one more little caveat, because we talked about the use. So here's an example. We had about 200 acre, one parcel along a highway. The rest of the corridor was getting sucked up by large, single-user distribution facilities. And we said, that's not the best use of that land. So, never really changed the zoning from business park, but we changed the allowed building type there to drive it to be an area where only smaller industrial users could get, come, get, could get in there. You know, you have 20 little tool-and-dye distribution facilities or small manufacturers, you get a lot more tax revenue and employment at a higher caliber than you did that one distribution facility. So that's how we were able to drive what that particular area looked like and to form and relate that character of that industrial corridor. I'll leave it at that, and I'll obviously be available tonight for a long time coming. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. What's next?
Um, well?
Well, I guess, I mean, did anyone have any comments or questions directly to Mr. Tilko?
Sarah.
Will we go on?
So-
Now that he's sat down, we'll make a good backup.
The, um, so the agenda asks to go over the vision, review the 75% plan, review updates DPZ made, and then conclusion, preparing for a second joint meeting. We were going to distribute the regulating plan and the DraftDale Summit Form-Based Code tonight, but we're going to try to get that to you by the end of the week, rather than give it all to you tonight. We just wanted to see what tonight's outcome would be. So with the end of my presentation, Mike, thank you for, for speaking. That's all I have.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, I'll just, I'll just jump in, make a, make a quick comment. I know that there has been a lot of anticipation about receiving the first draft, if you will, of the, of the work that DPZ did specifically on form-based code. Staff has had that probably since October, the initial iteration. But I think as Lindsay alluded to during her timeline, when we first got that in October and staff reviewed it, there were a lot of disconnects there in terms of, as Mark indicated, terminology, some of our definitions and some things like that. And so rather than seed confusion in distributing that, we sent it back to DPZ and said, hey, let's try to incorporate more terminology, definitions that, that we work with and that we're familiar with, that likely mean the same types of things that you're referring to, before we end up distributing it. So I just want to allay any fears or concerns that may be out there about staff having had this for a while. While that is true, there was a method to the madness in terms of making sure that what you're going to be getting, that's coming from DPZ, is something that, that you folks are going to be able to more readily and easily digest and work with. So I think that, I think that DPZ accomplished that.
Yeah.
And we're, you know, as a staff, we're very excited to, to, to get the process underway and to begin working both with council and with PC. The other thing that I'll mention is I think that we all kind of need to gird our loins a little bit, because this is going to be a very long process. You know, it's taken us since 2021 to get to this point, and, and I think that all the steps and the process, the procedure, the consensus that we've built through that time to today has been very important. But the heavy lift is coming, and it is going to take a significant number of months. I would not be surprised that this is a 12 to 18-month process to work through all the various elements of essentially creating a new zoning district, regulating plan, a new approach to development in this area. Mike's experience may be much different in the communities that he worked. And I'd love to be wrong, and this happened much quicker. Maybe it will. But it, at this point, I just feel that we should expect, at least mentally prepare ourselves, that this will be a, a longer period of time for us to, to bring this to a conclusion where we actually have something that we can implement in the form of an ordinance and, and then roll out. So lots of steps along the way, lots of work. I think there's going to be a lot of back and forth between the Planning Commission and council. I think that at the last joint meeting that we had, we had talked about the role and the importance of the Planning Commission liaison to council. And there may be a need for a, a council liaison to the Planning Commission at some point, as we, as we work through these various elements, surprise what would become a new code for us. So there, there is a number of things. I think that while we can, they're fuzzy on the horizon, we kind of see them, we think that's the way that they're going to, to take form. Some of this will be, will have to be decided as we move forward about how best to, to address it. But I do anticipate a lot of back and forth between council and, and PC. For example, when we start talking about parking standards, I think that PC will probably start into that conversation. And I am sure that PC is going to have questions, because I think council needs to provide some, you know, some additional input on what, what are you thinking about parking in order for PC to finalize and, and come up with their final recommendations for, that come back to council for consideration. So I, I think that there will be any number of pieces as we go forward. I don't know if staff had anything.
You did, you know, we're going to break it down for you. It's, we're going to break the code down. So it's not just, we're looking at it all once together. It's going to be broken down into different elements. We're going to meet with DPZ and figure out the way to best review the code.
Yeah, one of the things that I would kind of, a look ahead as to where this discussion goes from tonight. First off, we appreciate everyone taking the time to, to go back and refresh themselves on this plan. Appreciate the continued support of the vision. I think we've, we've plowed a lot of field since then, but it's, it's always good to check back and make sure that we're, you know, at least keeping the roads in the, the right direction. Looking forward, so the, the thought for tonight, originally we thought about providing you with the, the code this evening. We wanted to have this discussion to make sure, one, that we were providing some clear guidance as part of a transmittal letter that comes to you in preparation for the next joint meeting. So when you start thinking ahead to that next joint meeting, we're going to release this to you, much like we did the Dale Summit area plan. There will be the form-based code, segments of the, the plan, that 25% that, that we talked about, that's your, your jumping off point for the next discussion. So in a month, six weeks, whatever it takes to get us scheduled for the next joint meeting, you'll have that time to look at the, the code, look at this, those pages that are in the plan and kind of digest it, formulate some questions. And then at that meeting, we'll have DPZ here to talk to you about the why behind the regulating plan. Why did they see what they saw and, and present what they presented? They'll also be able to provide you the why behind what you're going to see in terms of the form-based code. What you'll see, and, and, you know, the Planning Commission has probably heard some of this already, is a little bit more of a traditional form base. And the reason behind that is it's easier to move and loosen the, the code than it is to tighten it up. So you'll be seeing that coming to you. And again, we wanted to have DPZ in the room for that discussion. This discussion was very much about what our vision is for the community, or for the, the segment of the community. That discussion is about how do we implement it, and we really need their technical guidance to, to move that forward. But, you know, in terms of procedural steps, you'll be getting that form-based code here at, like I said, probably end of the week, early part of next week, with a transmittal letter that kind of talks through this a little bit. And we, we recognize, obviously, Planning Commission has other heavy lifts on their, their plate, so it gives you a little bit of time to continue to chew through workforce housing before we jump into this heavy lift that Adam alluded to, the next 12 to 18-month type process.
Yeah, go ahead, Ed, please.
Now that we changed some of the ordinances on the, on the shallow road pieces, and we had some demand out there to put in some housing, multifamily, or apartments, or those kind of things, we're going to have to do some interim steps then, if we're going to change code, because that's part of the Dale Summit area. So that's going to take some heavy lifting by all of us to make sure that our vision goes that way, and that we encourage the development by not being overly burdensome. And also, that might be a chance to start getting some affordable single-family, some affordable rentals, those kind of things in that area, which would kick off the whole thing that now college township is open for affordable-type development and not so restrictive.
May I? But I, I agree. I think a lot of what was done in the recent rezoning kind of anticipated where we may be going. And I think a lot of the elements that ultimately were approved in that rezoning plan and that ordinance address, at least to some extent, some of the very broad concepts of a form-based code. If at the end of the day, college township doesn't adopt a form-based code of some type, although I, I don't think that's the trajectory that we're on, but should that happen, I don't believe that there's any harm that's been done with the rezoning that has taken place. I think that the concepts and the principles that were implemented as part of that rezoning are going to be very workable for either the developer, the owner that requested the rezoning, or somebody else. So I'm, I'm very optimistic on that.
Yeah. As Planning Commission will recall, as we worked through that, that was that kind of second step of what DPZ's work task was, was the interim changes. So those interim changes were talked about and vetted with DPZ. You'll recall, they, they came to meetings and talked through that. So, yeah, I, I would agree and kind of echo exactly what, what Adam alluded to, is those were just, that, that was the first kind of dipping our toe into the water of changing the code out here. I think there's some lessons that were learned through that process, and how to approach the discussion, how to break it down into the segments to walk through in, in a more kind of consistent and efficient manner. And I would envision us doing a very similar thing with the form-based code. Break it apart, you know, how do you eat the elephant? One bite at a time. Yeah, that, that's what I think we're probably going to end up seeing with, with the development of form-based code. I mean, I have my own opinion on how to, how to start that, but we do want to rely on DPZ and, and Mike, obviously with his experience to, how have you seen best practices that we've rolled this out to, to make it so the community, one, understands and, two, embraces what the ultimate outcome may be?
Because we have some geographic things out there too, that you may not be able to put block units in, where you may have to do more curves and swales and those kind of things.
Absolutely.
Okay, excellent. Yeah, let's just open it up, you know, Ed, I think you started, but, you know, closing comments or questions from folks. I guess we'll go back to Rich first.
Sure. No, I think there's a couple of key things that I took out. Adam's right. This isn't going to, to be done right, it isn't going to happen overnight. And I think we're all cognizant of that. And I think that's one of the important things where we pushed out that college township is still open for business as we work through this. But we don't want to do anything that hamstrings us in that. So I think, I think the diligent nature that we're approaching it makes sense. And the more hands-on from council, from Planning Commission, from the public, from staffs, here, there, and everywhere, I think we're going to end up with the best product out of it. The big thing is, you know, change is scary. This is huge change for the center region. And so there's going to be an education piece that we got to get right to push, to push it out and, and everything. And until we get a couple of projects under our belt, that through it, you know, it's still going to be living. So, but nothing gets, nothing stays the same. It either gets better or worse, and we're choosing a path that we hope to make it better. So, I like it.
Thanks, Rich. Ed, anything additional?
No.
No. Susan?
Uh, no, other than, well, and thank you for your comments, Rich, and Adam, and all of you, actually. I lived in Dale Summit, and I lived in a condo in Dale Summit from 2007 to 2012. And the experience of living there was, was, it was exactly what we're talking about. It was fragmented. I lived about a half mile away from a grocery store as the crow flies, but I couldn't walk there. So it was, what is it? It's adjacent but not close. And, you know, trying to overcome that and getting stuck in the weeds, you know, recognizing there are lots of property owners, so many different details that it's hard to keep track of. But the way I anticipate the change, and I think it is a change for the better, or the opportunity for change for the better, is that maybe a lot of the work that gets done here, I will never see. And that's okay. It's important work, and it really could transform everything about the community. So I'm excited for it.
Matt?
Not enough of that.
Okay.
No.
All right. Lori?
Oh, I just want to say you have to start somewhere.
All right.
It doesn't have to be perfect. You just have to work at it.
Excellent.
I think the goal tonight, again, was to confirm that our vision, that we all agree on the vision. And, and I think that's the number one thing. So if there's a disagreement on the vision, somebody needs to speak up. I agree with the vision, but I, I think the goal here is to kind of treat this as a mini-comp plan, which means that if we agree on the vision, as steps go forward, we look at it and say, does it lead us to our vision? Is it in agreement with our mini-comp plan? Does, is this going to get us where we need to go? And again, some of them may be catalyst projects, which are what actually is the interim steps to, to get to that final project. But it, it's one of those things where I'm just opening it up so that, you know, when we leave tonight, if nobody speaks up and says, you know what, I think our vision is completely wrong, you've got to stay silent after that because you had your opportunity. But I, I will say this, as, as much as I did try to educate myself through our, our training processes on form-based codes and everything else- processes on form-based codes and everything else, I really think through some recent, several engaging and dynamic conversations I've had with Mike and his background, his experience, I would really think, you know, and I know he's going to work very closely with staff, and I will hopefully be able to still, be able to meet with him on a kind of a regular basis if he doesn't kick me out of his office. But I think we need to use his experience as a resource to turn around and say, what are the stumbling blocks? You know, you went through this process, so with developers, what, what were their objections? What, what did we, what did they have to overcome? Now, that may not apply in our area, but some of them may. And if we have those answers prior to all of a sudden a developer coming in, that helps us prepare to make sure that, guess what? Hey, folks, here's where we're going, and we know how to handle those situations. I think that's a critical feature on that. And I think the other thing, bigger, is when I started to open up my eyes a little bit more through our conversations, Mike, is we've got to integrate this concept also with our neighboring municipalities. It's not just us. They need to understand what we're doing. Now, not that they're going to change what our vision is or anything else, but I think the link between those municipalities and everything else is going to be the Center Region Planning Agency that's going to sit there and go, hey, here's what's happening on a bigger scale, how do we do this? It's interesting, again, I was, like I said, I was very interested and engaged when we started talking about Coralville and how close it was to Iowa City and what was there and how this developed here and how that developed there. A lot of that is relevant to what we're going to do. And I think when we start to see that aspect of it, all of a sudden, the realization that it can happen, all of a sudden becomes clearer, and I think that's what we got to use. So, Mike, hopefully I don't wear myself out. If I see my photo on the outside of the door and Marcella says, no, you're not allowed in, I'll, I'll understand. But I'm telling you, I think it's going to be great, and I think he's, he's already committed. I committed to do more stuff. I know he's going to commit himself to our, our planning staff and the other planners in this area, and I think it's going to be great. I think we're going to move forward as a region as well as a township.
We had a good meeting today. Planners meet twice a month. So, the first one is just around the table, what we're up to, and the second one, we're going to do workshops. Today, we talked about the comprehensive plan update, and, you know, when you have a regional comprehensive plan, your zoning ordinance has to be consistent with the regional comprehensive plan, and so, we have to ensure, and working with Mike, even, you know, the 2013 plan is kind of, you know, coming to the end of its life, but we have the opportunity to make sure that our work is going to be consistent with the new comp plan as it gets updated. So, we're going to stay close.
All right. So, I guess I won't steal your thunder, and I won't show any more love to Mr. Tilko.
Why?
Yeah, you know, just a couple of closing comments from me. Yeah, it's a marathon, not a sprint, right, as always, but also be prepared to sprint when we need you to sprint. That's all I ask. You know, I know, I know all of us are working hard when we need to work hard, and, you know, you know, I think most are saying, right? As Ray put, you know, keep that vision in mind, stay the course, right? Always, if you, if you falter or you misstep or you trip, come back to the vision and remind yourself why we're doing this, you know? You know, very, very sound words from Ray on that point of view. If there's nothing else from anyone, last call, I will accept a motion for our final part of tonight.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
All right. Thank you. We adjourn.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.